Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, January 20th, 2021, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
I am here.
Lucas Stale. Michael Gordon.
Here.
Doug Hardy.
Here.
Donald Bergen. Dan McGowan.
I am here.
Chad Nelson. Susanna Ballard. Matthew Mitchell. Sam Levine. Or Levin. That's it.
Okay, I believe we have, how many absences today? Madam Secretary?
We have three absent.
Okay.
Regular members, two.
We have two regular members absent, so Ms. Ballard, would you please come join us as an alternate? And then, Mr. Mitchell, if you would, and I believe he's participating by Zoom, if he would participate as well as a member today.
I will, thank you.
Okay, minutes from the last meetings, I believe there's two that we are looking at. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes from the November 18th meeting? Or the November 16th meeting? If not, I will, I'm sorry, was there somebody speaking up?
Mr. Commissioner, Chad Nelson just joined the meeting as well.
Oh, Chad just joined?
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning Chad. So we are only down one commissioner. Mr. Mitchell, if you would step back then, I certainly would appreciate it so that Mr. Nelson can participate.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Back to the minutes, we have minutes from the November 18th meeting and the December 16th meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGowan.
I second it.
And we have a second by Mr. Hardy. Any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and sign in and place your votes. You can't sign in? Well, mine's not signing in either. Minor detail.
I'm a yea vote, Maria. If Maria's there.
Michael is also a yea vote.
Working on a technical difficulty here. Wait for Maria to get back to her seat. So while you're working on that, Maria, we have three ayes from Chad Nelson, Michael Gordon, and Susanna Ballard.
Do you want to include Mr. Levine, I mean, Mr. Mitchell in the commission? I have Mr. Bergen and Mr. Levin only absent.
Mr. Mitchell, if you would rejoin the panel, I'd appreciate that, and cast your vote.
This is Mr. Mitchell, I vote aye.
Okay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is correspondent announcements. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Commissioner Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Harris, we have nothing, thank you.
Okay. All right, let me just proceed by saying this is a public hearing and there will be a structured order to the proceeding. The city staff will present each item, there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 21-2655. It is a request for a preliminary condominium subdivision plat for 2711 McCulloch Boulevard North, tract 121, block 6, lot 13A, creating a two-unit residential condominium subdivision in the limited multifamily district R3. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. The subject property here is on McCulloch Boulevard, just uphill from Blue Water Drive. It's currently a duplex unit, and they're asking to subdivide it into a condominium for two units. The zoning for the property is the R3, multiple-family zoning. All the abutting properties in the area are also zoned R3. Here's a snapshot of the proposed condominium plat, units 101 and 102, again, each side of a duplex unit. Only comments we received was one from the fire department asking to ensure that there's going to be fire sprinklers there, and if they're not, they'll be required to be installed. That concludes staff's presentation, open any comments the commission may have, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions by commissioners of staff on this item? Hearing none, I understand that the applicant is present if we need to have any questions, but he is not going to say anything at this point. All right, I'll move on to the hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action ID 21-2655, a preliminary condominium subdivision plat for 2711 McCulloch Boulevard North, tract 121, block 6, lot 13A, creating a two-unit residential condominium subdivision in the limited family, multiple-family district R3, plus all additions.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGowan, a second by Mr. Nelson, to approve ID 21-2655 with staff recommendations. Any further discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none, let's proceed to the vote. Mr. Nelson is a yea vote. Mr. Mitchell?
Yea.
And Susanna, did your vote record?
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to the applicant. Next item on today's agenda is ID 21-2657. This is a request for a preliminary commercial condominium subdivision plat for fly-high two subdivision condominiums for 6550 Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block 1, lot 11, creating 19 commercial storage units in three buildings in the general commercial/planned development district C2PD. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Subject property is on the north side of town, at the corner of London Bridge Road and Showplace Avenue, across highway from the airport. It's going to be basically an expansion of the existing fly-high storage condominium units to the south of it. The subject is, property is zone C2 planned development, which allows the proposed use. Again, it's expansion of the existing under development fly-high storage condominium units. And here is the subdivision plat, that shows the 19 units in the three buildings. There is a main access off of Showplace, and there also is connection internally to Phase One of the project. The applicant's here with any comments, and that concludes staff's report, open any comments you may have also, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions by commissioners of staff on this item? Hearing none, I understand that the applicant is present if we need to have any questions, but he is not going to say anything at this point. All right, I'll move on to the hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of a preliminary commercial condominium subdivision plat for fly-high two subdivision condominiums for 6550 Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block 1, lot 11, creating 19 commercial storage units in three buildings in the general commercial/planned development district C2PD. Mr. Morris, your presentation. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Subject property is on the north side of town, at the corner of London Bridge Road and Showplace Avenue, across highway from the airport. It's going to be basically an expansion of the existing fly-high storage condominium units to the south of it. The subject is, property is zone C2 planned development, which allows the proposed use. Again, it's expansion of the existing under development fly-high storage condominium units. And here is the subdivision plat, that shows the 19 units in the three buildings. There is a main access off of Showplace, and there also is connection internally to Phase One of the project. The applicant's here with any comments, and that concludes staff's report, open any comments you may have also, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions by commissioners of staff? Hearing none, I understand that the applicant is here and will make a presentation if requested if there are any questions of the applicant. No. Mr. McGowan, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Then I will now open it up to the public for the public hearing portion. Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak on this item? Either pro or con? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of a preliminary commercial condominium subdivision plat for fly-high two storage condominiums for 6550 Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block 1, lot 11, creating 19 commercial storage units in three buildings in the C2PD general commercial planned development district. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff on the recommendation? If not, we are at the table for a motion and/or discussion. Mr. McGowan.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve item ID 21-2657, a request for a preliminary commercial condominium subdivision plat for fly-high two storage condominiums for 6550 Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block 1, lots 11, creating 19 commercial storage units in three buildings in the general commercial/planned development district C-2PD, plus all additions.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Ballard. Any further discussion on the item? All right, let's go to the vote.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, good luck to the applicant. Item three on today's agenda, ID 21-2656. This is a request for a preliminary condominium subdivision plat for La Fortuna Townhomes, 2015 and 2025 Moyo Drive, tract 100, block 1, lots 1 and 2, creating a nine-unit residential townhome condominium subdivision in the residential, commercial, and health district R/CHD. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Here's the subject property, it's in just north of downtown McCulloch area, it's at the corner of Inyo Drive and Moyo Drive, it's two vacant lots at this point. The surrounding properties are all residential, multiple-family, or single-family, just to the north a little bit. Here is the zoning map, again, the R1 zoning to the north, all the abutting properties are zone residential, commercial, health district, which is a multiple-family zoning district. The subject property condominium plat is calling out for these nine units, multi-story units on the property with main access off of Moyo Drive, with garages on the bottom floor, and then living areas above. We received no objections from anyone, there was a comment from the electric company about some making sure that easements would be assured for all the properties, those will be addressed during the final plat process, make sure those are taken care of. That concludes staff's presentation, open any questions you may have, thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for questions of staff by commissioners, anybody?
No.
Okay, hearing none.
I have a quick question, will these units require fire sprinklers?
And who may I ask is asking the question?
Sorry, this is Matthew.
Just for the record, thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell, yes, they will require fire sprinklers, the fire department will require those, yes. They'll be reviewed during the building permit review for the project, make sure they meet all the applicable fire and building codes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff by commissioners? Hearing none, I understand the applicant is here again, he's not going to make a presentation, if there's any questions of him, he will come forward. Any questions of the applicant? Moving on to the public hearing portion, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, now is the time. And seeing none, we will bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of a preliminary condominium subdivision plat for La Fortuna Townhomes for tract, excuse me, for 2015 and 2025 Moyo Drive, tract 100, block 1, lots 1 and 2, creating a nine-unit residential townhome condominium subdivision in the R-CHD residential, commercial, and health district with the following condition, unit source energy services comments shall be addressed prior to recording of the final plat. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff on the recommendation? We are now at the table for discussion and/or a motion, commissioners? Anybody?
I make a motion to approve item 1D-212656, a request for preliminary condominium subdivision plat for La Fortuna Townhomes at 2015 and 2025 Moyo Drive, tract 100, block 1, lots 1 and 2, creating a nine-unit residential, excuse me, townhome condominium subdivision in the residential, commercial, and health district R-CHD, and all additions.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGowan, and a second by Mr. Gordon, to approve ID 21-2656 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's proceed to the vote.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, congratulations, and good luck to the applicant. Next item on today's agenda, ID 21-2660. This is a request for a conditional use permit for 950 Lake Havasu Avenue North, tract 2307, block 2, lot 1, to allow two outdoor smokers fronting Lake Havasu Avenue North for Rusty's Restaurant in the Light Industrial District. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. The subject property here is located at the intersection of Lake Havasu Avenue and Kiowa Boulevard North, just, of course, a block west east from Highway 95. It sits here on the corner, there's commercial development around it on all sides, there is a large wash to the south, and then to the east, there's a smaller wash. A little bit of background on this property and the subject request is, this property was originally developed in 1991, and has been home to various commercial uses since its construction. Currently houses two businesses, one of them being Rusty's Restaurant, and the other being a pool supply business. The applicant began erecting a new screening fence along Lake Havasu Avenue in anticipation of installing two outdoor smokers to be used as part of the restaurant use. Upon contact and discussion with city staff, it was determined that the current improvements that they're making to the property should cease, and the conditional use permit should be reviewed by the planning commission. So here's the subject property, the zoning here you see is light industrial all around, across Highway 95, there's C2 with a shopping center, and then C1 here where the property known as Kiowa Ponds is located. The closest residential properties are, again, across Highway 95, about a quarter mile away, there are one in the Cactus Ranch and Deepwater Lane area. Here are the two smokers the applicant is wishing to use for this project, they are electric pellet smokers, anticipates the hours of operation for them will vary depending upon what the need, some days they may not be used at all, other days they may be used from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Staff doesn't really anticipate this smoker use being an impact on the neighborhood, I don't really see it being an issue for the property and for the, any neighborhood, residential neighborhoods in the area. Here's the site plan of the existing property, again, Kiowa Boulevard's here on the north, and Lake Havasu Avenue to the west. The existing restaurant, it takes up this portion of the roughly L-shaped building, and then there's the pool company, pool store here on the south side. The proposed smoker location is down in the bottom left of this map, it's about a nine-foot by 32-foot portion of the property. Here's a photo of the applicant provided, showing what was under construction, so here's the slab here, that's about nine feet by about 32 feet, and here's some steel posts here, supports for the proposed screening fence. You'll see here, it's showing about 13 feet from the curb, and about 36 inches or three feet really from the property line to the proposed or partially under constructed slab for that property. Here are a couple photos that staff took, here's the portion of the building that's occupied by the pool company, and they have an outdoor screening area here for some of their materials, chain links with slats, and here's, again, the proposed smoker screening area with their slab, and then their fencing, the beginning of their fencing. One more look, looking up, Lake Havasu Avenue, going up to the north here, again, the existing pool store, their screening, and the proposed location of this smoker, and the screening for that smoker. Typically, we would have a 10-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the right-of-way, so I'll go back one slide. Typically, along, here's the property line, typically there'd be a 10-foot landscape buffer with minimum number of trees and shrubs required before we would have any sort of screening or fence material or a building, actually, the building setback's 25 feet, but typically we have a 10-foot landscape buffer. In this case, there's nothing, and they're proposing a three-foot strip there between the property line and the proposed fencing. As far as the fencing material itself, the frame of the fence is going to be metal tubing, and then they're proposing corrugated metal fence material for the screening material. Now, staff doesn't really have any issues with the outdoor smoker for this property, feel like it would be minimum impact on any residential areas, and I don't see it be much of an impact on any commercial area either. The issues that we see coming up arise from the development code requirements for screening materials, what we're looking for for screening would be like wood, or masonry brick, stone, wrought iron, compact hedging, or earth berm, or some combination of those that would screen the outdoor use, outdoor storage use. The other issue that the development code has is the screening location, we typically need a 10-foot landscape buffer for the first 10 feet of the property, in this case, they have a three-foot strip with nothing shown as far as landscaping, and then the fence that they're proposing to erect there. So that really concludes staff's presentation, we're recommending, we could recommend approval of this, but we're asking for some screening materials that meet the zoning code, as well as a separation for that 10-foot landscape buffer with some landscaping in it, so that could be staff's presentation.
Okay, we are at the table for questions by commissioners, I'm going to start by saying, Mr. Morris, do we still have an effect, kind of kitty-cornered to this property over in the shopping center on Highway 95, do we not have a smoking conditional use permit over there for Food City?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yes, they requested a outdoor barbecue smoker in front of their building a number of years ago, probably four or five years ago at least, and yeah, that's still, I'm not sure if it's still in operation, but that conditional use permit was approved, yeah.
I believe it is. I was just pointing out-
I thought that was four years ago.
Mr. Nelson?
I was just saying that was four years ago, huh? Mr. Harris, is it okay if I ask questions of staff, or were you done, or?
I wasn't quite done, I was just making sure that that got into the record, that there's already an application or a use for that type of application.
All right, why don't you finish first, and I'll-
I'm done, go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Harris, I was thinking the same thing about the Food City smoking area, and as far as I remember, the city didn't require any additional screening there, they just had like a wrought iron fence around there, and there was no landscaping buffer. So that was my question is, why would we require anything different of this applicant?
Well, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, if I may respond? You're right, the Food City property was approved with a conditional use- The, you're right, the Food City property was approved with a conditional use permit. It's not really the, quite the same situation. It's in that shopping center. It's well removed from any perimeter of the property that would require the landscaping strip along the right-of-way. And it's, it was there basically in front of the building, in front of the main entrance of Food City, between the parking lot and the entrance. It did have some requirements, as I recall, for some sort of fencing to make sure people got, were a safe distance away from it. There was no requirement for screening because quite frankly, it wouldn't serve any purpose there. Typically, the screening requirement is the first ten feet of the property adjacent to the right-of-way. So in the case of that shopping center, it would be along Highway 95 would be where the required landscaping and landscaping buffer would be needed. So, it is similar, but not quite the same. Go ahead.
If I understand correctly, their current plan is just to have like a wrought iron fence correct on this property?
Well, the, the application they submitted was for the fencing material to be corrugated. This corrugated, I'll flip to it here.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, this.
The corrugated steel attached to the pillars.
Yeah, the steel is the frame that would hold up the corrugated metal fence material here.
Okay, understood.
So it will be fully screened from Lake Havasu Avenue?
Yes, they proposed it be screened from, from, yeah, Lake Havasu.
And the wash and back?
Yes.
Any other questions of staff by commissioners?
I have a question.
Mr. McGowan. And please, Ms. McGowan, up to your microphone.
Does this smoker take up parking spots? How, how does it?
Parking spots I'm concerned about are this area they're going to put the smoker, where they previously sparking spots because I go to Rusty's and it's awful hard to get in, in the mornings. They took some sparking places out before. Is it their apple amount now?
Thank you for that question. Their site plan does not show any, taken up any site, any, the existing parking. No, they're not proposing to take up any parking. They're working around the existing parking. I'm sure they're, they don't want to reduce the number of parking spaces they have there either.
So no loss of parking spaces?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff by commissioners? Hearing none?
Matthew Mitchell, quick question.
Mr. Mitchell.
It, it appears to me that this smoker will be on the opposite side of the pool supply store from the restaurant. Is there any, anything, any issues raised by the owner or operator of that pool supply store?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. That would be a, probably a question better posed to the applicant. I'm not aware. I, I think they're, they're in, well, I don't want to speak for them. I think it'd be best if they answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, we'll get to that at the applicant's presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? Or answer questions? Please come to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Commissioner, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Tim Gwicky. I am with Rusty's Bar and Diner. And they're proposing this area to put some smokers into corporate dinner service. At the restaurant. It was previously a primitive area. It had no concrete, it was just dirt. Years passed, there was a, that area, particular area was fenced in, but was taken down from the previous tenant. We were just putting the fence back kind of where it was and put some concrete to put the smokers there. We do understand we're encroaching on that ten-foot landscape area. Again, the building was built in ninety-one. The rest of our parking lot is encroaching that area as well. We did keep it inside the property line, you know, just kind of kept it where the original fence was. We are not giving up any parking spaces. Previous, that area was just dirt. It didn't serve any purpose for anything, so we thought we would develop it with the owner of the property.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? And I'll start first. Do you have any objections to the recommendations?
I don't. My only question is the fencing, the, you know, we're trying to make it a somewhat of a secure area. Would like to stay away from chain link and wood. We thought we would be more secure with the corrugated. That's why we're going to go with that. Other than that, that was, you know, that and the ten-foot setback is our only issue. You know, we can give three and we'll landscape everything from the curb up to the fence, but I just, there's just no room for that ten-foot new code that wasn't there before.
But you do understand their recommendations of having to include a few plants and, and?
Fully, yes.
You don't have a problem with that?
Not a problem at all.
Any other questions of the applicant by commissioners?
Matthew Mitchell again.
Mr. Mitchell.
Have we heard from the pool store operator about the proposed plan here?
They have not said anything. They're just a tenant in the property, just like I am. You know, all of this has been, went through the owner of the property and they've approved everything that I've done so far. And I know that that tenant is a month-to-month tenant and they're looking to vacate the premises to move to a different location. I have a ten-year lease on it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ballard, you had a question?
Tim, my question is, is the, the ground that this is going to be built on, is that included in your lease?
With the landlord, yes.
With the landlord? That, that space has been added to your lease?
Yes, it has.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Gwicky. All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll now open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, either pro or con, now is the time to do so. Anybody at all? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of a conditional use permit for 950 Lake Havasu Avenue North, Track 2307, Block 2, Lot 1, to allow two outdoor smokers fronting Lake Havasu Avenue North for Rusty's Restaurant in the ally Light Industrial District with the following conditions. One, the smoker area shall be screened with a six-foot tall fence constructed of wood, masonry, brick, stone, or chain link with slats. Two, since the entire site is under landscaped, a minimum ten-foot landscape buffer shall be provided entirely on the subject property along Lake Havasu Avenue North, abutting the proposed screen fence with at least one twenty-four-inch box tree and two five-gallon shrubs to address the overall landscape shortage and to minimize the visual impact along Lake Havasu Avenue. Three, applicant shall provide a minimum to a ten B.C. fire extinguisher, extinguisher for this area. And four, all appropriate health department and building permits shall be obtained prior to use. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Nelson?
To approve ID 21-2660 with staff's recommendations, but to modify recommendations one and two. Approval be, to approve it with the applicant's screening material. Because I think the metal is sufficient. And modify recommendation number two to eliminate the ten-foot landscaping buffer, but to include a box tree and two shrub in the existing space.
And the balance of the recommendations?
The balance of the recommendations to stay the same, three and four to stay the same.
We have a motion by Mr. Nelson. Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Ballard. Any further discussion on the item? Okay, let's proceed to a vote.
Mr. Morgan? Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Good luck, Mr. Gwicky. All right, the last item on today's agenda is ID 21-2649. This is a request for a text amendment to Title 14, zoning, in parentheses, the Development Code, to modify Section 14.04.09b2, operating standards, noise to reference possible changes to the city's noise ordinance in Chapter 9.30 of the city code. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This is actually just more of a housekeeping.
Would you please bring your microphone closer to you?
There you go. This is actually more of a housekeeping matter than anything. The, some other, other, other city staff is reviewing and drafting some changes to the noise ordinance, which is under Section 9.3 of the city code. This section that we're now contemplating removing from the zoning code deals with noise. So under a section of the zoning code, there's a section that deals with noise. So I'm going to go, actually, just, let's go to that section. So this is the section of the Development Code or the zoning code that deals with noise. Of course, since this is part of the Development Code, the city council typically doesn't approve a change to the zoning code unless the planning department, or planning, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of that item. So, to change, to make a change to the noise ordinance, Section 9.3, they felt it's important that the section that deals with noise in the Development Code is eliminated or basically moved over to the noise ordinance so that we don't have a section that deals with noise in the Development Code and a section that deals with noise under the noise ordinance. So, again, because this is part of the Development Code, the Planning Commission would give its blessing basically to move this section, remove it from the Development Code and put it into the noise ordinance, however they're going to do the noise ordinance. So this is, again, more of a housekeeping matter. I believe that part of the reason they're trying to do something with the noise ordinance to do with the base, the amount of base sometimes that comes through and annoying neighbors. And we're just trying to get this out of the planning and zoning, excuse me, the Planning Commission, Development Code section and put it into the noise ordinance. So at this point, we're asking that language in the existing planning and zoning section dealing with nuisance and interfering with the use or enjoyment of adjacent properties and this language shown here be struck out. And then that will eventually be rolled into, hopefully next month, rolled into the noise ordinance. Hope I'm explaining that all right. That concludes my presentation. Open any questions?
Okay, we're at, excuse me, we're at the table for discussion or, excuse me, questions of commissioners. Again, excuse me, question of the staff. And I'm going to start with, what generated this issue? What specifically caused us to take notice and look at this? Do we have any complaints?
I believe it's complaint-driven. I'm not sure if the city attorney maybe has some more background information on that.
Currently, the city is looking at some options for dealing with short-term rentals where we're getting a lot of complaints due to noise. And so, this began some changes to the noise section, which is 9.30, and looking at the whole code and any other sections that might contain noise. Notice some noise sections in here that causes some issues with enforcement when you have it in two different places. So, we've moved all of it into 9.30, which makes the change necessary here.
But that didn't give me any specifics, I don't think.
As far as, well, this all, this all started based on complaints that we're getting related to short-term rentals.
Okay, all right. Any, for any other questions of, of staff on the presentation? Okay, I'm going to then open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close it, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends land use action number 21-2649, a text amendment to Title 14, zoning, Development Code, to modify Section 14.04.09b2, operating standards, noise, to reference possible changes to the city's noise ordinance in Chapter 9.3 of the city code, be forwarded to the city council for approval. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, commissioners?
Mr. Harris, may, may I have a, just a question to staff?
Mr. Nelson?
Luke, I don't know if you'd mind just giving example where this affect the Development Code, where it becomes an issue for the Development Code?
Not quite sure I understand the question. Let me see if I can maybe restate it. Are you wondering why this would become an enforcement issue if it's in two different locations?
No, not an enforcement issue, but why is it a problem right now? Like what, what would initiate us taking this out of the Development Code?
Well, we're, we're trying to take it out of this portion of the city code overall. So, take it out of the Development Code, which is part of the city code, and try and take it out of the Development Code and move it over specifically to the noise ordinance portion of the city code overall. So that we have it all under one, in one location, if you will. So, these standards, instead of being kind of scattered around through portion, different portions of the city code, in this case, we're removing this little portion and transferring it, if you will, to the noise ordinance portion. So, if someone says, hey, I've got a question about noise, what's the deal with noise? How do I, what, how do I, what are the rules for noise? We can go, okay, here's the noise ordinance, 9.3. This tells you all you need to know about noise, instead of having it piecemealed around in different sections of the city code. Hopefully that helps answer.
I believe you have the noise ordinance printed out there at the meeting, but I don't have it in front of me.
And as far as the noise ordinance, that's something that the city council will be addressing next month, is my understanding, through, through staff. Staff reports to the city council for noise, addressing or changing Section 9.3. So, that's again, why we're trying to remove it from here, just put it all in the noise section.
Yeah, and I guess that's my issue is removing it, but we don't have, we're removing all that language that has something in place to keep it completely blank. Like we can't, we don't have anything to approve or to base the approval on.
Well, if I may. It, it remains the noise ordinance. Quite frankly, this portion in the Development Code and the zoning code is not, again, it's a little, I'm not explaining this very well. The noise ordinance is where we remain in place. This does not change anything with the noise ordinance. Removing it from the Development Code here, the zoning code, will not in any way affect the existing noise ordinance. We have a noise ordinance in effect. It, it's, it's on the books. This is saying, hey, this is a portion of, that deals with noise in a different location. So in trying to clean up all the city code, we're saying, hey, this, the first step is remove it from the Development Code so that it can be put in, not put in, so remove it from the Development Code and then it'll be part of the noise ordinance overall. And so there's one source to go through when, when there's noise complaints. So, there, don't get me wrong, there's, this does not say, hey, now we don't have a noise ordinance because we're removing it from the Development Code now.
So, Mr. Nelson, if I might interrupt. So what would be the problem with just duplicating the verbiage or the text and putting it in the noise ordinance and leaving it in the Development Code as well?
Well, that.
I guess the, I guess the problem, if we're in a public hearing, so if I were a bystander and I'm just trying to kind of represent the people of the city, it looks like we're removing something, but we're not, we're not giving them a definition of what Section 930 is. Don't know what it is. Do you understand what I'm saying? So we're, we're removing something without showing the public what we're, what the noise ordinance is. Does that make sense?
So, back to my original question, Mr. Morris. What would be the problem with just duplicating the verbiage in the noise ordinance?
Well, if we're looking to put it in one location, that defeats the whole purpose having it in two locations. I mean.
Ms. Gary? Soliciting input.
Yes, so what's stated currently in 9.30 is not exactly what is contained in the Development Code. 9.3 goes into great detail about what levels are allowed and what zoning districts, how it's measured, and, and all of those things. There's just kind of a brief mention here in the Development Code of noise, which causes some conflicting, which causes some confliction. So, we want to remove that. So we want to remove that from this portion and have the meat of everything having to do with noise in nine point three oh. So there's still, as you can see in the text amendments, there's still a, kind of like a mention of the noise, but all of the enforcement, all that we do with noise is under nine point three oh. And so the changes that are happening to nine point three oh are having to do with decibel levels and adding in new tools. So it's not, we're not getting rid of the noise enforcement or anything like that. We're just cleaning it up through the process.
So again, my question, what would be wrong with having it in both places? One in the enforcement area and one in kind of like the definitive area?
There's a couple of different reasons. One, if you're a person and you're searching the city code and you're looking for noise regulation, you're going to go to nine point three oh most definitely, because it's called noise. And so most people are going to be directed there. They're not going to think, most people aren't going to think, well, I need to search the whole entire code for something that might just happen to mention noise that might be the same or might be different from what's contained in nine point three oh. So it's much cleaner to have the regulations regarding noise in nine point three oh. Also in how it's administered. How it's administered under nine point three oh and how it may be interpreted or administered under the development code are different. You're including maybe different people in that process, which is causing all of any confusion. So we want to eliminate that. We want to make it as simple as possible, not only for staff, but for people from the public that are looking for answers to their questions or to their issues. So not a big fan of repeating things in the code in two different places. Another reason is trying to update and keep the code up to date. So if you updated in one place and you forget in one place, now you've caused a whole nother issue. So I'm just not a big fan of duplicating unless it's absolutely necessary. In this case, it's not absolutely necessary. The enforcement of noise should be in nine point three oh, not in the development code.
Mr. Nelson, does that answer your question?
Well, I just, it answers the question. I mean, it's not a complicated subject, but for planning and zoning, or for the public, is there a reason why we're not putting section nine point three oh up screen right now for the public? What's the reason why we're not doing that? That's what I want to know.
I guess, Mr. Nelson, if you really want to look at nine point three oh, you can go to the website right now and pull up chapter nine point three oh and see the regulations for noise. I guess we're not going into detail of the changes point for nine point three oh, because that's not something that comes before the commission. It wouldn't be proper for us to be discussing it, whether those are appropriate changes or not appropriate changes. Those changes will go to the city council. It will all be through a public process. It just, it's a different process than the commission process.
Yeah, but you're asking us to remove it.
I understand, I understand, but I'm telling you that the noise regulations currently exist in nine point three oh. It's not that something doesn't exist today. It exists today, that's what we operate under. In reviewing all the code, we found this, said, mm, this can cause some problems. So that's why we're coming through and cleaning it up now.
I would suggest that we're not removing it, we're just relocating it. And Ms. Gary brings up a very good point, that if we amend one portion of the code and we've got it in both places and forget to take it out of the other, then we've got conflicting statements, so.
And I agree with that too. I agree with that too, but we're in a public format. So I would assume, you know, representing the public, that we would just show them what nine point three zero is. So they, I mean, I guess if the public has any input before the city council meeting, I would recommend that they go to section nine point three zero.
Good suggestion.
And that's it, thank you.
All right, any other questions of staff? I forgot where we were in the process. Are we at, are we at discussion and/or a motion?
I think staff made our recommendation.
Did we do the public hearing part? I apologize.
Yes, you did.
Okay, we are back at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners?
I think we have a motion on the table. Oh, no, maybe not for this one. I'm sorry, no.
We do not, to my knowledge. Discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners, anybody? Mr. McGowan?
I make a motion to approve item one D dash two-one-dash-two-six-four-nine, a request for a text amendment to Title fourteen, excuse me, zoning development code to modify section fourteen oh-four dot zero-nine B two, operating standards, noise to reference possible changes to the city noise ordinance in chapter nine dash thirty of the city code, and all the attachments or whatever else needs to be done besides that.
Okay, do we have a second?
My second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGowan and a second by Mr. Hardy to approve item number ID two-one-two-six-four-nine with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, let's go to the vote.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Nay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. At this point in the meeting, the next item would be called to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the commission on any item whatsoever, now is the time to do it. Anybody? Okay, I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Our February third meeting has been canceled. We don't have any items for February third. The next regular scheduled meeting will be February seventeenth.
February seventeenth is the next meeting. Okay, thank you, commissioners. We appreciate it. We are adjourned.